Okay, I will call the October 19th meeting of the Thomas Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. My name is Ken Foreman, I'm the vice chair. And let me begin by asking everyone please to silence your cell phones if you have not already done so, and then introduce the board. So from your left, Jerry Potamus, who is associate member of the board, T.J. Hurry, who's the vice chair, Kim Bealan, who's the clerk of the board, Ed Van Kuren, voting member of the board, Paul Murphy, who's a voting member of the board, and Robert Dugan, who's associate member. And then also, we have Suri Budra, who's our zoning administrator, and Ashley Demello, who's going to be the recording secretary tonight. So I, as I'm sure many of you know, the zoning board is charged with applying our zoning bylaws, as they've been approved by town meeting and by the Commonwealth, to hear special permits, variances, and appeals. And our goal, of course, is to hear full and fair testimony. So just to give you a little overview of the process, to begin each hearing, we'll ask the clerk, Kim, to read a public announcement of the hearing, and to present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments, summaries of correspondence, and so forth. And then we will give the applicant or the applicant's representative 15 minutes to present the project, describe the project. Then the board will ask questions of the applicant's representative, and then we will invite the public to comment, either in favor, opposed, or just if you have a question. If you would like to make a comment, please wait to be recognized by the chair, then go to the podium and state your name clearly for the record. Obviously, direct your comments only to the project, refer from making any personal derogatory remarks, and address the board. You're not talking to the rest of the folks in the, in the public. If the board feels we've heard enough information, we'll close the hearing, have discussion, and render a decision. If we feel we need more information, we can continue the hearing to a date certain in the future. All the votes in order to be approved require a four to one supermajority. So with that, we have one, two, five new hearings, we have one continuation today, and the first continuation, oh seven oh dash seventeen, Lee Mills Petroleum. I understand there might be correspondence regarding that.
There is. We received an email on Wednesday after Ray Teeth from Ken Caputo, just requesting that the hearing be continued, and he indicated that November 2nd, 2017 would be excellent.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to continue to November 2nd?
Make a motion to continue to November 2nd?
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Ed and Kim moved to second it to continue to November 2nd here in Town Hall at 6:30. All in favor?
Aye.
And aye. So that passes unanimously. Then we come to our first new hearing of the evening, oh seven four dash seventeen, Burill, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, 25 Worcester Court, Falmouth, to raise and reconstruct a two-family dwelling and construct a single family dwelling. Kim, you have?
Yeah. Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that James V. and Leslie E. Burill of Marlborough, Massachusetts, apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 248-3 and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to raise the pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling and construct a single-family dwelling exceeding the 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 25 Worcester Court, Falmouth, Massachusetts. For referrals from Concom, no filing received yet, needs RDA that shows first-floor elevation is at least one foot above base flood elevation and stormwater contained on property with roof gutters to dry wells, entrenched drain, and driveway. And we did have a, received an RDA from Concom subsequent to the referral on October 16th. Fire department had no comment. Assessors noted that it includes lots 23 and 25. And planning had no comment, and there are five letters stating approval for the project.
Okay. And I'm guessing that Mr. Amet is here. We can get the...
An excellent guest, Mr. Chairman. For your record, I'm Bob Amet, I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent the applicants, James and Leslie Burilli, who are, might be to my right here. This is an application under bylaw Section 240-69E to have lot coverage exceeding by 20% and less than 25% as, as is allowed by special permit. 25 feet is okay, as long as it's been reviewed by the Board of Appeals and found that the detriments of the project exceed any penalties. This is also brought under Section 240-3 because there are existing nonconformances, which will either be eliminated or made less nonconforming as a result of this application. Specifically, there's an existing two-story house at the property, 25 Worcester Court, and it's a two-family house. The house dates from 1930. It is not on the town's list of significant structures, but at this point, it's 87 years old. It's outdated. In order to improve the house, to substantially improve it, one has to comply with floodplain regulations. Since the property is in the flood zone, its first-floor elevation is at 10.9 feet, and the proposed house will be compliant because it will be at 14 feet, one foot above the 13-foot elevation. It's in an AZ, AE flood zone. So, one nonconformance that will be eliminated is that there's a two-family house. Another one will be that instead of not complying with the flood zone requirements of the zoning bylaw or the state building code, the new house, of course, will comply with flood elevation. The third nonconformance is that the house presently is 11.5 feet from the, from the street, and the proposed house will be somewhat less nonconforming. It will be 12.8 feet away from Worcester Court. Now Worcester Court, as you know, is what I guess in Falmouth would be considered a rare boulevard. It has a very wide center of open space, and the houses across the street are actually on the other side of that boulevard, and they're more than, I think I have a map, more than 200 feet away from the houses on the other side. To be accurate, it's 187 feet measured by the towns, on the towns GIS map. And this lot in particular, though it's a 7,200 square foot lot, which is typical in, in the heights, sits in a location that gives it the feel of a much, a larger lot. To the north is a house that's at the corner of Jericho Path and Worcester Court. That house is 225 feet away from where the new house will be. And to the south and to the southeast, the houses there are, will be more than 50 feet away from the proposed house. And the rear of the property, actually, most of it is an unbuildable lot, and it's heavily wooded, so that there are no views of the structures that are to the, to the east on Montgomery Court, and this lot has a bit of privacy. There is one house close by, that's the house at 21 Worcester Court, and there is a letter from the owner of that property in support of this application, as well as four other letters from owners of property on Worcester Court. So, the new house incorporates a garage in it, and it will have 24.68% lot coverage, as I, as I said. To allow that lot coverage, the Board of Appeals is supposed to consider certain criteria that are set forth in the bylaw. They include consideration of the average size and height of other houses in the neighborhood, also the effect on shadowing of other properties as a result of the construction of the new house, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. So just to take those up, and perhaps in reverse order, there'd be no impact, and no adverse impact on effective nitrogen because this property is connected to the town sewer. Furthermore, it's the change of a two-bedroom house, I'm sorry, a two-family house to the single-family house. The house will be set back just a little bit from Worcester Court, a little further, and it will be an attractive structure shown on... These beds are down here. And there'll be no adverse on, impact on views from the public ways. I've already mentioned the distance of this house from neighboring houses, and there won't be any shadow effects as a result of this proposed house on adjacent property. Now, we've provided the metrics from the town assessors' information as to the height and relative size of other structures in the neighborhood. You have that information. In terms of size, I think that the best measure is the gross floor area of a structure, which is information that's available in the town records, and the proposed house will fall right about in the middle of that gross floor area. The finished floor area of the house will be 2,719 square feet. The total area, gross area is 3,263, which includes decks and includes the garage. It's just a one-car garage that's proposed. In terms of the height, of 36 houses that are within 300 feet of the proposed house, 22 of them are one and three-quarters or two-story houses, and 14, or less than half of them, are only one or one-and-a-half story houses. Now, the finished height of this house, measured per the zoning bylaw, will be 31, I think it was 31.8 feet. But four feet of that almost is due to compliance with the flood zone requirements. And I'd like to point out that the grade shown on the town topo maps of this lot is at about eight feet, and the property rises to, going to the south, that is towards the closest abutting house of 21, and that house is at about 13 feet. So, or sorry, at about 11 feet. So we're looking at a house that's three feet, starts three feet lower, and take that into account, that it's both a combination of this house begins lower, and it has to comply with the flood zone, in part for that reason, but the result is that much of the increase in, in height is due to flood zone, and the impact of having a house 31 some feet tall, of course, 35 feet can be allowed, but the 31 feet starts a few feet lower than other houses in the neighborhood. Houses across the street, some 200 feet away, on the other side of Worcester Court, the town topo map shows that those are at elevation 14, so those are five or six feet above the level of this house. This house will be a benefit in terms of the increase to the tax rolls, and that's something you take into account at least a little bit. So I've given you the reasons. We're building a bigger house, includes a garage, which doesn't exist now. It does increase lot coverage to a level that is allowed by special permit. Impacts of that will not be adverse because of the relationship of this lot to other houses quite a distance away on the relatively open area of Worcester Court with its big open space in the middle. So in summary, I don't think that there are adverse impacts from the request for a special permit you're granting that overweigh the benefits to the, certainly to the Burillis, to the neighborhood and the town of having a new house on this site. It is a post-two-story house. There are other houses in the neighborhood which are two-and-a-half stories. If you have any questions, I would have to try and answer.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions.
It looks good, I like this, Galen. The one question, it'd just be mine, I'm assuming you're not connected to the sewer system, based on where the stuff is?
Not yet.
Not yet, thank you.
Replant.
Again, if you're gonna testify, that's fine, but come, come up to the podium.
I should've asked you.
Should've asked me?
I have to ask someone if the house is connected.
Well, you can ask me.
You're asking me.
But I wasn't sure of the answer.
I have no idea.
No further questions?
Obviously, the existing house would, will need to be if it is occupied, but if it's going to be torn down for the new house, well, leave the new house on it.
T.J.?
Noticed in the plans that dry wells were proposed, so I assume they're adequate to handle the rainfall?
Well, Tom Bunker is here and can answer that. I guess it is an opportunity to say, although it was said earlier, that the Conservation Commission has reviewed this plan and approved it pursuant to the RDA process.
You have a comment about that? Drainage?
Typically, we show the dry wells. We don't do a lot of calculations for it, and we don't actually know where all the downspouts are. There'd be one, there'd be more, more dry wells that are shown on this plan because it'll be one dry well, as notes it in each downspout. So when, when all the downspouts are connected, then it will be enough to, for the storm.
Thank you.
Okay, Kim?
Do you just have a couple of questions? So no shed proposed?
No, there's no shed proposed.
Okay, and you'd be amenable to a condition that none be had?
Sure. I think that if it can be allowed administratively, it'd be fine, however, a shed would count towards the lot coverage, and there isn't very much room to do it, so that's a reasonable.
That's all I had.
No further questions?
No questions.
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. You did a nice job of giving me all the information that I would have normally asked for. Let's see if the public has any questions, comments, concerns. Okay, Suri, any?
Nothing. Thank you.
If there's nothing further from the board or the public, we could close the hearing.
Make a motion to close?
Before you do.
Okay.
I think it's a little big. I think it goes right up against that 25% lot coverage. I think it's big compared to houses along Worcester Court. I just, I think they could have, they're raising and rebuilding, they could have moved back the front yard setback.
So I'm just looking at these gross buildings.
I know, it's difficult to tell.
5,600 square feet, 36.
Well, Jericho Path is a different roadway.
45, 26 Worcester Courts, 33. 101 Jericho Paths, 53.
If no one else is, I mean, I just think it's...
You know, they're converting it, there's some pluses, they're converting a two-family into a one-family.
But the two-family has the appearance of a one-family.
True. And...
Not until you look closer to the front, the door on the left.
Yeah, it's not as if it's a very large structure.
They are making it less nonconforming.
I know.
The house is moving away from the closest neighbor. It's actually being pushed to the north. The only neighbor affected who's in favor of this application is to the south.
I don't know, I think it's just pushing the boundaries. But I tend to be more conservative than others.
Well, you know, Kim, I think we've seen some pretty significantly egregious ones. I just, I don't think rises to that. And they do have to make it taller.
Yeah, I understand that.
But it's scale, it's not...
The scaling is great.
It's not a big block. So sure, wouldn't we love to have it be 22% lot coverage? Of course. They are entitled under the bylaw to go to 25%.
I know that.
Yeah, it has good roof lines to where it's not...
Right.
...a bulk.
Yeah, it's not like a square, right?
Well, if you guys don't need more information, can we, if you're determined, you can close that.
Anyone want to move to close?
I'll make the motion to close.
Okay, Ed, anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Ed and Paul, all in favor of closing?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Okay. Now we need a motion in favor or opposed.
I'll move to approve application 74-17.
Okay, T.J. moves in favor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Okay, you want to make some findings?
Sure. As far as the bylaws go, they're going from two-family down to a one-family building. They are, let's see, they are improving the front setback from, I believe it was 11.5 feet to 12.8.
Yep.
It'll also be compliant to the flood zone regulations. See, they'll be, I guess testimony was that they'll, they will be connecting to the sewer. Applicant was amenable to having no shed proposed on the property. 240-216. Should we mention the Concom RDA?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I think that'll be covered by 240-216, I think.
No, 240-69E. You do the standard, no shadow impact, no viewer vista impacts, no coastal embayment impact. Put those standards in. What about detrimentality under 240-3?
I'll add a couple findings, and I'll vote in favor. The testimony that's moving away from the nearest, the closest abutting home, I suppose, is how you'd have to say it. And attorney I mentioned, not adverse, lot coverage due to relationship of neighboring properties, so maybe we could just work that into one.
So based on the list?
And that will address my concern.
Based on the list of gross floor areas submitted, they rank 12, about 13th out of 36. There's 12 properties that have greater gross floor area in the neighborhood.
And you said for lot coverage, or for...
That's gross floor area.
Gross floor?
Gross building area.
Okay.
Assessors' criteria. Bob said they, they're going to 3263, including the deck. So I think that makes, that meets our, our general criteria of things fitting in.
About detrimentality?
Yeah.
It's not more detrimental?
Okay.
There were no conditions yet, Kim?
I understand, I want to make sure, I want to make sure we're done on the findings.
I think we're all set with findings.
Do you want to do a finding on the dry wells, or did you and I missed it? Dry wells are shown with, and...
They are proposed.
Approved by Concom?
So per plan, or we don't need to say that?
It says per plan, there'll be one per downspout.
Yeah, because they're gonna possibly add more at every, I'll add that at every downspout.
Okay. And did you include the no sheds?
No, conditions, yeah.
That's the conditions, right. Okay, so now we're going to conditions.
There was testimony that there's no intent for a shed, and she didn't say that.
Yeah, T.J. did say that.
Okay, or excuse me, T.J.
No, no problem.
All right, T.J., you're up for conditions, you get first crack.
Per plans and no shed on the property? As far as anything else?
Paul Edwards?
Well, connection to sewer, do we have to make that find out?
That could be a finding.
I mean, yeah, it's a finding, not a condition, yeah.
Okay, so that addresses the 240-216 method of sewage disposal, right?
Right.
Okay, so per plans and no shed, any other conditions anybody would like? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm in favor, so pass it to Ed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next hearing is 075-17, Bogosian, 8 Alma Road in Falmouth. Special permit to construct a mudroom and attached garage, increasing lot coverage to greater than 20%.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Harry the Santa Carita, California, apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 248-3C and 248-69E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a mudroom and an attached garage addition to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 8 Alma Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts. And for referrals, engineering, it was the standard comment, which also notes a new driveway is proposed that will require filing and permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or rights away. We recommend dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater measure for the roof. Please post house number visible from the street. Please note there is a row cut moratorium for Alma Road until April 2021. Concom provided stormwater from project is contained on the property. Do not need any more runoff contribution towards Route 28 Main Street where flooding occurs. Fire Department, there was no comment. Assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment.
Okay, and for the Bogosians?
For the Bogosians, I'm Dana Wessel, representing the Bogosians and my own company, North Star Construction. The Bogosians moved here in 2008. They've used the home primarily as a summer residence up until now, and they plan on using the home more in the days to come. This is not the first time that... This is not the first time that this board has contemplated a special permit application. Back in two thousand and five, there was a special permit proposed under section two forty-three, pre-existing non-conforming. For an addition, that is right here, that is a bedroom and a bathroom. That was approved and constructed prior to the Bogosians purchasing the home. We're also applying under section two forty-three, which is pre-existing non-conforming. And we're also applying under section two forty-sixty-nine, maximum lot coverage. We're proposing to exceed the twenty percent allowed by right. The pre-existing non-conforming nature exists with the front setback right here, fourteen point nine to the landing and twenty feet to the foundation. That's the, that's the only non-conforming setback. The zoning is residency. It's not in a floodplain. There are no overlay districts. Project of the property is currently connected to the municipal sewer service. The project contemplated is a one-car garage, breezeway, and some unfinished space over the garage. The existing coverage by structures currently is sixteen point seven percent. We propose to increase that to twenty-four point one percent. The total coverage, structures, parking, paving, would be thirty-four percent, still less than the forty percent allowed. The height of the addition is the same as the house, eighteen feet. It's far less than the thirty-five feet allowed. And the setbacks of the proposed additions all meet current setback requirements. Section two forty-sixty-nine E allows the zoning board to contemplate projects to cover up to twenty-five percent of the lot and to take into consideration the size and the height of the structure and release, I think we just went through all this with Bob, tough act to follow. Section two forty-three C relating to the pre-existing non-conforming extension alteration or change. Both of these, both of these sections of the bylaw pretty much boil down to the same thing, which is detriment and conformity with the existing neighborhood. So, take a look at the neighborhood. These, these two, these two forms which are included in the package that I prepared for the Board of Appeals include the three hundred foot of butter radius with some notes on here. One, one thing that I wanted to note was that this, this particular property that we're proposing to addition is currently the smallest property out of the entire three hundred foot of butter radius. Some of the direct abutters include Friendly's and the Falmouth Plaza. That's just south of eighty-five thousand square feet and structures. Over here on the corner of Alma and Falmouth Heights Road is the Paul Peters Insurance Agency. You can see is, is actually encroaching up to about two and a half feet from the property line of the Bogosians. And with all these commercial uses aside, if you just look at the residential uses within the three hundred foot radius, ten of them have garages like we're proposing. Nine of them are of a non-residential commercial use. And within those nine properties are included probably dozens of businesses within them. I think, you know, after contemplating the area that this is in, I don't think that we will cast any shadows. I don't believe that any visitors will be affected by the construction of this garage. And I think that it fits right in with the rest of the properties that are in the neighborhood. And be happy to answer any questions they might have. Oh, the referrals from conservation and engineering, as far as the drywells, I would be happy to, you know, put some drywells in. We wouldn't be happy to, but we will. You know, I didn't put those on the plan yet because I'd like to suggest that we limit those drywells to the, to the area that really needs them, which would be the downspouts that are in the proximity of the driveway, which would promote any runoff that would go to the street. I, I realize why those drywells are being requested because we have a, you know, continuing problem right here at this intersection in front of the Bank of America. And when it rains hard, it fills right up. But, you know, I don't think, you know, from the backyard and the rest of the property, it's all grass and, and that's really not going to run off into the road. So I think if we just handle the, the front of the house and the back one of the garage and what's in the proximity of the driveway or an impervious surface, that, that that would be sufficient. Thanks.
Okay, let's, before you sit down, let's see if the board has any questions for you. I started with Jerry last time, so I'll start with Robert this time.
Just on, just on the shed that's there, would you consider removing the shed?
We did, we, we did consider removing the shed. We've considered moving the, or actually just moving it. But, you know, in, in light of the lot coverages of the surrounding properties, in light of the fact that that is tucked in the backyard up against a fence that abuts the Friendly's parking lot, we just really, really didn't feel as though it would, it would intrude on anybody or create a condition that, you know, anybody would find objectionable. So, we would, if, if we had to. We hope we don't have to.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
As to the road cut moratorium, does that have any impact on what you're trying to do?
No, it's an underground electrical service, which is currently on the property, where we'll have to take up a section of the existing driveway to dig for the foundation. But besides that, there's no need for us to, to dig into the road for anything. Everything's right there.
If you could just, I guess, describe what the unfinished space above the garage will be?
It's, it's just as you see. So, you know, as the Bogosians are heading down towards here, they're eyeballing that space for a potential future master suite, for future space. It's not part of this application. We propose, we are not going to finish it, heat it, insulate it. But, you know, at some point, you know, we would like to leave the option open for the Bogosians to, whether they have to come before the board again or, or whatever they have to do to, to expand on that space in the future.
So it's three bedrooms remaining?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think the proposed height's eighteen feet for the addition?
Correct.
What's the height of the current structure? Is it?
Eighteen feet.
It is eighteen.
Yeah.
It just looked like it was a little.
It does. When you put a rule, it's, it's an optical rule.
And then just crawl space under the mudroom and slab under.
Correct.
Okay.
And no finished space in the existing house. There's no, nothing finished on that.
Thank you.
TJ?
All my questions were already addressed.
Anything, Jerry?
No.
Okay, and I think you've addressed all of my questions as well. So let's just see if anyone in the public wants to comment. Suri has a comment?
Yeah, we did not, excuse me, I apologize. We did not get a Board of Health referral on this. The space above the garage is off from a bedroom. So it wouldn't be considered a bedroom at all, so.
Oh, I see, it's a pass-through from the other bedroom.
It's a pass-through. So it would not be considered a bedroom unless they closed it off and put stairs down, you know, exterior or something like that, so. I'm, I mean.
Or reconfigure it one day.
If they're, if they're putting heat in now, they might want to do that. But the other bedroom would become a sitting room if they finished that off as a master bedroom.
Right. Testimony was that it's going to be unheated at present.
Right.
And, am I correct in thinking this is on the sewer?
Yes.
It is.
It's connected.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out. Because it wouldn't be considered a bedroom because, as Kimberly said, it is a pass-through.
And if they try to make a bedroom in there, they'd have to come back in front of us anyways.
I'm sorry?
If they wanted to make a bedroom in the future, they'd have to come back in front of us in the Board of Health and make any appropriate adjustments.
It's town sewered. They're allowed four bedrooms right there.
Didn't think you could have a bedroom off a bedroom.
You can't. It wouldn't be a bedroom. That's what I'm saying. If they make that into a master bedroom, then this other bedroom would become a sitting room type of thing, unless they closed it off and put stairs down.
Same, same thing.
Which would still be allowed as four bedrooms in the sewer district. So I was just letting the board know that in case.
Right.
So you don't have to be strong in your conditions on that possibly.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Right, now let me just see if there's anybody out there that wants to comment. And I don't see anyone. So if we have heard enough, we could close this.
I'll move to close.
Second.
Okay, moved by Kim and seconded by Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion?
I'll move to approve application seventy-five seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kim and Ed. And findings?
Yes, so. Jeez, I didn't write them down. Usually I write them down. Finding that height of the proposed structure will be eighteen feet, consistent with the existing ridge line of the house. Testimony that it is connected to the sewer. Testimony that the space above the garage will remain unfinished. There was testimony that there would be no heat and insulation. Testimony that they were amenable to adding drywells.
No finished basement?
Yeah, I mean, it's just going to be slab and crawl space under the new addition. Three, do we want just finding that's three bedrooms remaining, three bedrooms?
That's up to the board. Just a finding. There's existing three bedrooms. The plans show three bedrooms.
Yes, and remaining three bedrooms. I tend to agree that probably the shed, I know I tend to really want sheds removed. It is a big shed that would probably cut down the lot coverage, but no one else feels strongly. I mean, it backs up against.
Commercial.
Commercial. I don't know if I might.
And, and it's fenced.
And it is fenced as well, yeah. And it is actually pretty far off the, the lot there. It's not as if it's two feet over five. So I think that's fine if that's nice, from my perspective.
I agree.
I agree.
Two forty-three, right, two forty-two sixteen.
So a significant finding, the, the front yard setback, which is the non-conformities unchanged.
Thank you, Pam.
Unchanged, because the new, the new structure is built.
Setback.
Setback considerably, let's see, is there a number there?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
So the proposed addition is conforming?
Yes.
Yeah, sixteen feet from the side there too. Twelve feet from the side there. Okay, conditions then? Did you?
Per plans. That condition that we include with the dry well where per engineering determination or whatever that language, what's the language that we usually use?
Well, testimony was that he's amenable to the drywells at the downspout. So maybe you might want to condition that because of the water issues that they have over in that area.
Perfect.
So.
Actually, that could also be a finding, is that there has been frequent flooding at the intersection of Heights Road and
Route twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Route twenty-eight nearby.
So at nearby intersection?
Yeah.
So we'll condition those drywells then at the downspouts?
I think we should.
Anything else?
That's it.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone satisfied?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, darling. Ladies?
And ladies. Forget the ladies.
Nice catch, David.
Okay, that brings us to the third public hearing of the evening. Provenzano, twenty-one Hawthorne Court in Falmouth, which is a special permit to raise and reconstruct a dwelling.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Richard J. and Nancy R. Provenzano of Hoover, Mass. apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as twenty-one Hawthorne Court, Falmouth, Massachusetts. For referrals. Second. Engineering, it's, I guess, the standard comment. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property. It butters or rides away. Drywells are shown for the roof runoff. Please post house number visible from the street. Please note there is a road cut moratorium for Hawthorne Court until April two thousand twenty-one. Concom, on September sixth, we received their referral. Just said no filing received yet. Needs RDA filing that shows first floor elevation is at least one foot above base flood elevation. Stormwater contained on property with roof gutters to drywells and trench drain in driveway. And we did receive an RDA from Concom on October seventeenth. Fire Department, no comment. Water, water service is from a two-inch nineteen-thirty water line. Water supply is limited. Available, jeez Louise. Available pressure. And if work includes an irrigation system, there is unlikely to be adequate supply. How to tell we don't get water comments, why? Difficulty reading that handwriting. Assessors includes lots seventeen and nineteen. Planning, no comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower, attorney with Amet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent Richard and Nancy Provenzano, the owners of the property twenty-one Hawthorne Court, and the applicant's in this matter. They are before you tonight because they're seeking to raise, R-A-Z, raise and rebuild the existing single-family dwelling on the property. As a little bit of background, they've owned this property and been coming to Falmouth on a consistent basis for the past thirty-two years. And they're finding the existing footprint and layout inadequate to their family's needs at this time. This property is located on the easterly side of Hawthorne Court in the heart of Falmouth Heights. The existing house is a one-story dwelling with a footprint of approximately one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet on a lot of seven thousand four hundred and ten square feet. It's in a residential C zoning district and the entirety of the lot is within the AE thirteen flood zone. The existing structure is non-conforming in many ways. It's non-conforming to front yard setback being twenty point four feet where twenty-five is required. It's non-conforming to side yard setback being nine point eight feet where ten is required. Lot coverage by structure being twenty-three point nine eight percent where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent by special permit. In addition, there was a shed on the southeastally corner of the property, which is less than two feet from both the side and rear yard lines. The existing bridge height of this house is fifteen point six six feet. As this is, it's located in the flood zone and is currently non-compliant with constructions, construction standards for a flood zone due to the first floor elevation being too low in the existence of the full basement. These renovations will trigger the necessity of compliance with those standards, having exceeding fifty percent of the appraised value of the structure. As such, they have no choice but to raise and rebuild the structure and increase the size of the building in order to allow their family to use it for many years to come. This requires a special permit from you due to the existing non-conformities, as well as the lot coverage by structure remaining over twenty percent. This is under both two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E. Now, at the risk of repeating what's been said twice tonight, for the record, I think I have to, two forty dash three C allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit of this board, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty dash two sixteen and whether or not the alteration creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs a view of vista, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Similarly, two forty-sixty-nine E looks very similar. Similarly, two forty-sixty-nine E looks, uh, very, very similar, uh, standards, asks you to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. It, uh, asks you to consider the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas, and a well, as well as the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This proposed structure is a significant improvement over the structure that exists today. It eliminates all the non-conformities. The only reason we require a special permit is the fact that the lot coverage will, will be over twenty percent. The front yard setback will be improved from twenty-point-four feet to twenty-five-point-five feet, which will comply with the standards of two forty dash sixty-eight A. The side yard setback will be improved from nine-point-eight feet to ten-point-three feet. The rear yard setback is improved from less than two feet to eleven-point-six, and the rear and side yard setback will therefore comply with two forty dash sixty-eight B. The offending shed is removed, and the lot coverage of structure remain, by structure remains at twenty-three-point-nine-eight percent. With the issuance of a special permit from this board, that will cease to be a non-conformity. In addition, though not, non-conforming, the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is being reduced from thirty-six-point-one-three percent to thirty-three-point-four-nine percent. This structure will be in compliance with the Building Code and FEMA regulations. The first floor will be located above the flood elevation, it will eliminate the basement, it will move all the mechanicals above the flood zone elevation, and the first floor will now be located at elevation fifteen, which is about three and a half feet above the natural grade. All of this is to say that this results in no new dimensional non-conformity being created, all of the existing non-conformities being eliminated. It's not a detriment to the neighborhood, and due to compliance with construction standards in the flood zone, it is in fact a benefit. As to views and vistas and shadows, I'm gonna kind of lump them together, it's clear this will be a visible structure, it's going up, and it's going up, uh, not in substantial amount, but it's certainly not out of character with the area. It doesn't impact the views from public ways, which is what this board is supposed to consider. As to the lot size, we did prepare a table, which was submitted last week, which shows the lot size, gross building area, footprint, uh, and the stories of the forty-three single-family homes within three hundred square, uh, three hundred feet of this structure. Seven of those homes have a larger gross building area, and there's an additional seven that are within a few hundred square feet of this proposed structure. Fifteen of the homes have a larger footprint. This property is not an outlier in this area at all, it's essentially within the mid-range. In order to, uh, address the concerns of massing that the board often has, they've added quite a few designs and details to the facade in order to, um, make it alive, so to speak. The board's asked to consider these factors, but they're asked to consider these factors all essentially to determine whether or not the adverse effects outweigh the benefits. This is a substantial improvement. We're eliminating all of the existing non-conformities, we're bringing it into compliance with flood zone standards, and we meet the standards of two forty, two sixteen. For these reasons, uh, that I've mentioned, uh, I believe that this, uh, project is eligible and should be granted a special permit by this board. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. Jerry?
No comments.
Who's Jerry?
Attorney Clower, could you address, uh, engineering's comments, uh, both about, I believe, the dry wells and, uh, if there was any irrigation system proposed?
I'm not aware of.
Any irrigation system proposed?
Neither is the engineer, and, you know, as, as you would expect, we are amenable to dry wells as needed.
That does it for me, thank you.
That does it for you. Kim?
Sure, I, I'm sure that you addressed this, Kevin, I apologize that I missed it. Septic, is it on the septic?
Proposed sewer according to the plan.
Yeah. This is on the.
Thank you, Charlie.
On the sewer, thank you.
Okay, so proposed sewer. Um, could you talk a little bit about that den on the second floor? Because I think it has a walk-in closet, I'm just trying to understand that.
So there is a closet, which is gonna be off the den, right by the den and bathroom area, that can be used as storage for amenities for the house. It's at the top of the stairs, there's a four-foot cased opening, it doesn't classify as a bedroom, uh, under the regulations of Title V. So this has bath, walk-in closet here, which is use of storage.
Would they be willing to open that cased opening further?
I don't know, and they're not here with us this evening, so I can't answer that for them.
Okay.
But I think that the standard has been a four-foot cased opening that would usually used. I know in the past we have occasional, uh, when the. Gone with the five-foot cased opening?
It is, well, some on our plan is five.
Yeah, so I, I don't think there's any need to expand beyond that.
Well, I think most dens also don't have walk-in closets, so that's the.
But we're, we are eliminating the basement, and this is gonna be used for storage, and they're expanding the size of the bedrooms, so.
Okay, um, oh, I just wanted to ask, the raised patio, is, I think it's, I saw something about raised patio versus at grade, so I just had a question about that.
It's, it's raised lightly, it's not gonna be to the level that would constitute a structure under, uh, the Building Code.
And then, so that, that third floor, I guess that they're adding up, so that's primarily for storage?
That's gonna be mechanical storage space.
Okay, that's all I have.
No questions?
Um, just a layout question, um, they're increasing the functionality, but do you know what the process, the thought process was while they didn't include any closet in the fourth bedroom?
No. I don't, I don't, I, I don't know what the, uh, clause behind that might be.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, I don't think I have any questions that haven't already been, it's the problem between the chair and the board. And it's been addressed. Let's see if, uh, anyone in the public has a question.
Yes, my name is Tom DiPaolo, I live next door at Twenty-Seven Hawthorne Court. Our property basically surrounds theirs, we're over here, and, in this area here, and my home sits over here. I'm basically not against the, uh, the project itself.
Microphone.
I did visit the office.
The microphone.
I, I did visit the office today, uh, in, in the backyard, you know, he talked about two feet, that's just two shed only, that's, that's in the right-hand corner. It's right on the line, and when they put that in, I told them it was okay to put it on the line, because it was basically dead area for me, and I had constructed it. But the current house, it slants slight, slightly, uh, from, when you look at it from the right side to the left. And the, the closest point of the current home is approximately fifteen feet from the rear line, and when you go to the other area, it's even a few more feet because of the slant. When I look at the stakes that are on there, the stakes look like, uh, they're approximately ten feet from the line. Additionally, they talk about constructing a wall along the back. If that wall is constructed there, I have a line of fir trees that they would have to chop half of the fir tree out in order to put that wall up. When the fir trees were planted, they were planted maybe two feet into my land, of course, when they get bigger, they overlap. But that, that would have to be done if that wall is going up, I don't know how tall that wall is going to be.
Address your comments to us, and we'll get the answer for it.
Yeah, the, uh, I'm, I'm just, uh, I wanna get clarification of exactly how far the foundation of the house is going to be from my land. Because it, it looks like it's pretty close.
Okay.
Right now. That was my biggest concern, otherwise I'm fine with the project.
Right, let's find out what, what, uh, they can address this.
The, uh, the rear yard, I'm sorry, the rear yard setback to the structure will be eleven-point-six feet, which exceeds the ten that is required.
What is this retaining wall, though?
Uh, I believe that's the raised patio that Kim was addressing. That'll be raised, it looks like it's three steps off of the grade, so, um, foot and a half high?
Foot and a half high?
Seven over seven.
A retaining wall's a patio?
A patio will tend to be unretained wall, uh, unretained by retaining wall.
And the distance of that from the property line?
Uh, it looks like it's probably two to three feet, but that's not considered a structure under the zoning bylaw.
Could you address that?
Uh, I can, the zoning, zoning bylaw specifically says that structures do not include retaining walls, uh, in the definition section, two forty dash thirteen.
Right, but this isn't, well, I'll phrase this in the form of a question. This wouldn't be constructed to retain land, per se, it would be constructed to retain a mammy patio.
Sure, well, the Building Code also defines that retaining wall is more than four feet from its, uh, base point to the height as being a structure. Anything below that is not considered a structure by the Building Code.
But that's the Building Code and not necessarily our zoning bylaw.
Sure, but our zoning bylaw specifically says not retaining walls.
Right.
Is there a definition of retaining walls in our zoning bylaw?
There is not.
So this was a question that we, we can talk about this in, I think, board discussion.
It's actually considered landscape, because it doesn't get to a certain height.
That's below the four feet?
Thirty inches.
I'm assuming the trees on your applicant's property, so the trees would be coming down, at least the root structure's gonna be heavily damaged, to put that wa, retaining wall.
It's, it's the first I'm hearing about fir tree roots, um, I think that.
I'm just assuming.
I, I think that, that care can likely be taken, but there might well be damage. And I think that on some level is probably unavoidable, but I think that care can be taken to minimize that damage as much as possible.
Whose property are the fir trees on?
Apparently the trunks are on, uh, I'm sorry, sorry, I missed your last name. Mr. DiPaolo's property, but the roots likely extend underneath, uh, underground to my clients, which is, yeah, happens.
You know, I just wanna touch on this patio situation. I deal with this, uh, occasionally. I mean, it's a judgment call, and I think it would, I think it should go towards a ju, you know, a judgment on maybe past practice. There's no difference, per se, other than the selection of materials between a deck made out of wood and joists and fastened to the house, and a patio either ground-level or raised, slightly raised. We seem to, in building and zoning codes, kind of ignore patios constructed out of natural materials, but for some reason, when somebody wants to build a deck, maybe at the same elevation, or out of the, or off the ground, the same height or same elevation off the ground, all of a sudden, it's a structure, and it has to comply with a, with, with a setback requirement. You know, a, a deck, we just consider them structures, but a patio, for some reason, you'll find most, you'll find most towns and municipalities seem to just dismiss it. Why, I don't know, but I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you.
Alright, so, with respect to the applicant's testimony, Paul, do you have a particular question you want?
Oh, yeah, we were on questions, not really. I should've saved that for board discussion. I should've saved that for board discussion, I apologize.
Great discussion, but, uh.
So, Tom, Tom has just pointed out that, that's not actually specifically called out as a patio. My assumption on many levels is that it is going to be a patio, but that's probably not going to be needed.
I think what I'm trying to understand is why it's needed, maybe, Tom can address that. What is it retaining, or why is it needed?
To, um, the, the floor of the house is elevation fifteen, and without the ground being lifted up, the ground there is, uh, from eleven-point-six to eleven-point-nine. Too big of a step, and frankly, we're eleven-point-six feet from the property line, there's actually not room for steps in there. We put in a landscape wall, a retaining wall, just filled with earth, and we have a, just a stone landing outside the door. It's basically, uh, it's basically a raised area to go out the rear door.
So to what depth do you need to excavate to put in this retaining wall?
I think they're scraped the loam, I mean, some of these, it is less than four feet high, it's basically three feet high to the top of the wall, not to the ground, the top of the wall, which is above the retained earth. It can be done with the, sorry, the, uh, stacking blocks, doesn't need a concrete footing as such, the, the blocks you put in with pins or whatever, maybe some geogrid in there, but it does not have to be, uh, not intended to be a cast-in-place concrete wall, the footing is just, it's a, it's a, it's a landscape wall.
And it's worth pointing out that the reason the house as it exists is anywhere from fifteen to nineteen feet from the rear yard line, is because it's twenty feet to the front yard.
We get that. So, Tom, uh.
The retaining wall won't have a footing?
No.
No, and it, so in your experience, then, how much damage might that cause to adjacent vegetation?
As the neighbor said, the tree planted about two feet from the property line, and this wall is two feet on the other side, four feet away. Some roots would have to be pulled off, uh, but not requiring a big concrete footing is not as detrimental, this type of wall would not be detrimental as a, as a cast-in-place concrete wall, not concrete, it doesn't go down four feet.
Right.
This type actually only has to be, the bottom course of block, blocks of eight to twelve inches tall, only the bottom course of block has to be below grade.
Okay, so about a foot below grade, maybe. Okay, I think that hopefully addresses the question. Yeah, if you'd like to make a present comment. But again, address your comments to us.
He stated that the, uh, the home is gonna be eleven-point-six feet from the line. If that's the case, because with the stakes that are there right now, I don't think are eleven-point-six.
I think what you're seeing is the stakes for the retaining wall, probably.
No, no, it was, they, there's stakes going right across the back, and it shows where the stairs are gonna be, et cetera, and there's another stake in the middle of my bush that's for the retaining wall, and I know where that is. If it is in fact eleven-point-six feet, I don't have a problem.
Well, that's what it says on the plan.
And that's got a seal on it.
We'll condition it to build it like the plans.
Okay, uh, any other comments in the public? Any other questions, comments from the board?
I don't have any.
Comments, I do, but not, I think.
Yeah, well, we'll.
Okay.
For comments, we can close, right, and then you can make comments.
Yeah.
Should we close?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, entertain a motion from Paul for that?
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Kim.
Oh, thank you. So, I just have some concern, obviously, as you heard when I was asking questions about that second floor den with the walk-in closet, and then you have a bedroom upstairs with no closet, which just seems odd to me, and I, I don't wanna presume something is nefarious, but I, it just seems like that den with a walk-in closet is a little troublesome, because I think it's easily timbered. And I know we do the five-foot cased opening, but I think it might be better if we can make it a little wider, that would be appropriate. Um, you know, to still separate the space, but if it's being used as a den, you don't need, I, I just think it's very odd to have a walk-in closet off of the.
Does the limitation to four-bedroom?
It is four bedroom.
I mean, and that will be in the deed?
It won't be in the deed. It'll be, it'll be in our decision, which they're supposed to record, but sometimes that doesn't happen.
Oh, I thought they had to, I'm sorry.
They're supposed to.
What?
I said, they're supposed to record our decision, but.
They have to.
Sometimes that doesn't always happen.
Otherwise, they can't do it.
Yeah.
And that's a provision.
Yeah.
Built into the permit.
I mean, that might help for me.
And that is checked by the building department.
Oh, they make sure, because other towns, sometimes they.
Even, yeah, sometimes it doesn't have to.
And the five-foot cased opening, it just depends on the type of construction. And the five-foot case opening, it just depends on the type of construction, where that opening falls, and what type of header it has, so-
Yeah.
You know, where it's placed in the wall and what the construction is, you know, if it's twelve feet, sixteen feet, whatever.
So it could be structural.
Pretty good spans in there.
Yeah. You know, you open that more, you might need a bigger header or beam or something. I don't know.
Or a post.
I've been out of the building code for years, but that may be one reason why. Five foot is normally what we ask.
I know.
Yeah. It gives you more wall space to-
So this is also on the sewer, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the limitation under the Board of Health regulations is four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
So if they were to build another bedroom, they'd be in violation of that in addition to our decision.
Yeah, you can, if you approve it, condition it no more than four bedrooms. And it's already been conditioned basically through wastewater, so.
Right. I mean, I agree, Kim, if I were building it, I'd want that whole second floor to be open when you go upstairs all the way.
It just seems a little, if the walk-in closet wasn't there, I wouldn't, but it just seems a little curious. That has the appearance of a bedroom more than-
You can never have enough closets.
We have one very similar to that, where it's filled with games, and we don't want kids going up and down the stairs, so we put them-
Toys and everything else being run down.
Yeah, you can never have enough closets. That doesn't bother me. Anyway. If we could ask people, please not to interrupt us.
All right, so we'll do the conditions that we usually do.
Well, do you want to make a motion first?
Yeah.
And do the findings?
We need someone to make a motion.
Yeah.
Anyone want to do it?
I'll make a motion to approve special permit number seventy-six dash seventeen.
Okay, moved by Paul, seconded by Ed. Let's start with findings, Paul.
All right. The setbacks for the new struc, for the new structure greatly improved from the old structure.
Well, they all conform.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Yeah. I can't think of any. I did one, though.
Um, that it's located in the flood zone, so they're elevating. And eliminating the basement, so that's why there's storage proposed on that third floor.
They have adequate wastewater disposal? Or nitrogen mitigation?
Well, they're on the sewer.
Well, it's the same thing, I guess.
So they, from the butter list of homes within three hundred feet, I think the testimony was- Seven homes exceed the gross building area, and just looking at it myself, two of those homes are on comparably sized lots. So it is consistent with the neighborhood.
They're removing that shed, and the lot coverage will remain the same. Finding that it's four bedrooms, and that there's a den proposed on the second story, or the second floor with a case, five-foot case opening.
We could have a finding with respect to the retaining wall.
Mm-hmm, I think that's appropriate.
And it's necessary to accommodate this steps from the building.
For agress at the rear of the building.
Sure, that's a nice way of putting it.
And that the wall will not have a concrete footing.
Yeah, I like that. Okay. Shall we move on to conditions?
I think so.
Build it like the grounds.
Well, I think we might want to condition that retaining wall, since there was a butter concern too.
No footing.
No footings.
And four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
Anything else?
As designed. Per point.
That's been said.
Yep.
Okay.
So, sorry, do we make under findings like the usual two forty, two sixteen?
I, I, I do that based on your testimony. And you've pretty much covered everything underneath that.
Let us know if you leave anything out.
I do.
Yeah, they are going up, but- All right, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to the fourth hearing of the evening. Gomes, twenty-three Otis Street, North Falmouth, and this is hearing number oh seven seven dash one seven.
Tom. Tom, do you want to ask them to move, please? Thank you.
Ken, if I had to put money on it, you're the last person I would have said, I would have expected to say, you can never have enough closet space. I'm everyone, probably the last one.
Never met my wife.
Okay. Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Robertine Stacy C. Noms of Boston, Mass. applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to construct an addition over the existing second-floor deck creating habitable space within the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as twenty-three Otis Street, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, and for referrals. Engineering has the standard comment. Fire department, no comment. Concom contains stormwater on property, or, yes, stormwater on property. Planning, no comment. Accessories, no comment. And there was one letter of support submitted.
Mr. Chair, members of the floor, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney at Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing Robertine Stacy Noms, who lives on twenty-three Otis Street, North Falmouth. Twenty-three Otis Street is located in the McGansett area of North Falmouth, on a lot approximately five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square feet. It's located in a residential B zoning district. The existing dwelling is a five-bedroom, two-story home with a footprint of two thousand fifty-three square feet and a height of thirty-four point eight inches. It is non-conforming as to front yard setback being six feet, where twenty-five is required, rear yard setback being eight feet, where ten is required, and the lot coverage being twenty-seven point three percent, where twenty is allowed by right and up twenty-five percent by special permit. The Nomses are here this evening seeking a special permit to renovate the interior and exterior of their home. Specifically, they're looking to enclose deck space on the second floor in order to increase the habitable space. This will include improvement, this will include, I'm sorry, this will improve the aesthetics and the comfort, aesthetics, comfort and functionality of the house for them. The addition will not impact any of the existing non-conformities. There's no increase to the footprint of the structure. Lot coverage remains the same. The roof line of the enclosed addition area will be the same as existing, which will remain below thirty-five feet. There's actually going to be a decrease in bedrooms from five bedrooms to four, but due to the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under two forty dash three C. Two forty dash three C allows the Zoning Board of Appeals to issue a special permit for a pre-existing non-conforming structure to be changed or altered when that change or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. You're asked to consider the standards of two forty dash two sixteen, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs any views of vistas from public ways, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. It's worth pointing out that this home was actually built in nineteen-ten, which predates the Falmouth zoning bylaw. And even once the zoning bylaw came into existence, until the mid nineteen-nineties, lot coverage allowed by right in this area was thirty-five percent. So this was made non-conforming as a product of the decrease in the mid nineteen-nineties. The non-conforming aspect of this structure will remain unchanged. The proposed addition is going to be located on the Westerly side, which is an area with a more than adequate setback to the side yard in that direction. There's no impact or change to any of the existing non-conformities. There's no detriment to this project relative to the existing structure. There's no adverse effects. There's no new non-conformities. There's no impact on views of vistas. Decreases the number of bedrooms, and it meets the standards of two forty dash two sixteen. Based on this information, I would ask that you grant this request for a special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Okay. No questions. TJ?
What is the existing height, and with the proposed addition, will it remain the same?
Thirty-four point eight, and it will remain the same.
Thank you.
Jim?
Just, is there a shed on the property?
There is none.
Amenable to a condition that none be had?
Sure.
Right, thank you.
No questions.
No questions. No questions.
I don't think I have any questions either. Seems straightforward. There's almost nobody left out there who isn't an applicant, so I don't know. Anybody have a comment?
Tom might feel very strongly about this project.
No questions from the public? Okay.
I'll move to close.
Ready to move this along, Kim? Kim moves to close. Did I hear Paul second? Or Ed?
I second it.
Ed. Okay, Kim and Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, decision?
I'll move to approve. I think this looks like a reasonable addition.
And Ed, did I hear you a second?
I had a second.
Kim and Ed, okay, final?
That all the setbacks are remaining unchanged, so that there will be no impact in terms of side yard or lot coverage. That it's five bedrooms currently, and it's going to four bedrooms. That the ridge height is thirty-four feet, eight inches, and it's remaining the same. I would just make a finding that the original structure is from nineteen-ten. An old, an old structure predates the zoning bylaw. Finding that applicant is amenable to not having a shed. And I also want to find that the addition is on the side with the, almost forty-three foot setback. I think that's important. I would say it improves probably the functionality of the home of the applicant.
Okay, and then in terms of conditions?
Per plans, and no shed.
Per plans and no shed, okay. Any board have any other things they want to add to this?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I? Okay, so this passes unanimously?
Thank you very much.
And that was one of our more efficient hearings.
I think it's Kevin's creepiest one, too.
Okay. That brings us to our final hearing of the evening, which is Clements. Again, I hope I'm pronouncing that properly. Eleven Sandy Lane in Hatchville, which is another special permit to raise and reconstruct, oh seven eight dash one seven.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that James Wick Clements, trustee of Carver, Massachusetts, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-eight D, and two forty dash sixty-eight A of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as eleven Sandy Lane, Hatchville, Massachusetts, for referrals. Engineering is the standard comment. Plus assists, ri-wells are proposed for the roof area. Please post house number for new residents in a location visible from the street. Fire department has no comment. Planning has no comment. Concom, no filing received to date, shall require the filing, oh, yes, shall require the filing of a notice of intent application. Do we receive anything straight now?
We haven't gotten anything from Concom.
Okay, accessories, no comment. And water. Sandy Lane present, presently has a six-inch, I don't know what that word, I think it's an abbreviation, pipe installed in nineteen-seventy-seven. Property has, really, I think I typed these, has this, has a something service already with the meter. Meter will need to be- Oh, my goodness.
Frostproofed?
Into the building, contact DPW Water. I apologize, I can't.
That's all right. I believe-
Need to be relocated. Meter will need to be relocated into the building, contact DPW Water. It's a big R E L and then a space.
So that'll be, that'll be a condition that you guys make when you, if you approve this. And Conservation did submit an email. It might be the second one in there. Ashley just brought that to my attention. From Courtney to Zach.
Oh, yes. So this is order, hearing was closed on October eleventh, should be issued no later than November first. Thank you.
So they did have a conscom?
Yes.
Conscom.
Okay, Tom?
Thank you. My name's Tom Barker, BSS Design. I'll try to be efficient as Kevin was. We have, here is an existing house, eight hundred and ninety-eight square foot house. Covers twelve percent of the lot. It's one of the remaining small, original cottages around Pinecrest Beach, seventy-five hundred square foot lot, fronts on Jenkins Pond. It is, this, we're here before you because this structure is non-conforming. The front yard setback is nineteen point three feet to the main corner of the house, but there's a, steps coming down there, the bottom of the set is seventeen and a half feet from this bulb of the street line at the end of the road. The, to the sort of straighter part of Sandy Lane, the house is twenty-two point seven feet. The house is sixteen feet from Jenkins Pond. Setback from a water body is fifty feet. It's non-conforming in those two respects. The setback on the east is eighteen and a half feet, fifty or more feet, fifty-eight feet of this corner here. As I mentioned, the, it covers only twelve percent of the lot, so it conforms in those respects. The height of the house is only fifteen point eight feet tall. Has two bedrooms, because of Title V requirements, there's no room to put in a large septic system, so it must remain a two-bedroom house. The house is old, there's too many repairs for it to meet code, or it's been decided to raise, you could use raise with both spellings. The net effect is, is that it will just be lifted up higher. In order to put the septic system ten feet above the groundwater, groundwater near the pond, we had to make the foundation taller. Presently, it's just kind of a tall, not a crawl space, but a scooping space under the house. But now, raising the, putting in a taller foundation, it can be a full-height, lower-level in the house. So we're filling the front yard, basically just up to the, the street line, or the level at the, the street frontage. We do have a couple of stepped retaining walls here, and then the area in that location, which I have marked in brown there, is where the septic system is, and that's built up in fill to be high enough above the groundwater. This plan, the septic upgrade, has been approved by the Board of Health, and we have gone to two hearings with Conservation, and that, as noted, the hearing was closed, and- And that, as noted, the hearing was closed, and we do expect a approval on that. Because we raised the foundation, as I said, it got taller, the floor has raised from elevation thirty-one and a half to elevation thirty-six. There's about four to six feet of fill, depending on where you measure, from the existing elevation across the front of the house. So across the front of the house, the proposed house is at the elevation thirty-four in that area. Presently, it's slopes from elevation twenty-eight to thirty. The house will be exactly the same footprint, except that the size of the stairs have been juggled around. These two perspectives. Currently, there are stairs in this location, but the door is up on the main floor, because the lower level is not fully habitable. And so these stairs were removed, and so the entry door is at the lower level, and the stairs are on the inside. The stairs across the back on the pond side, because the floor got taller, the stairs are longer. So we took coverage off from the side stairs and used it to go into, add to the back stairs to go into this, this other door here. So it turns out, came out to be the same amount of coverage. Couple, couple square feet smaller, that's not worth mentioning. The ceiling, I didn't bring that section, but it's in the plans there. There's one section through the building where a little bit of it is a sort of cathedral ceiling. The roof line is steeper than the existing house. And it's taller. The existing house, as mentioned, is fifteen point eight feet tall. The proposed house is twenty-five point two feet tall. So it's almost ten feet less than what's allowed. And that twenty-five feet is measured from the average grade, which is down there somewhere, not from the grade across the, not, not from the proposed grade across the front of the house, but the existing average grade across the front of the house. So it's really not even twenty-five feet tall when viewed from the street. I can mention that relative to the neighbor, the neighbor to the east on this side here, their land, their property is up around elevation thirty, thirty-seven or so, so actually relative to the neighbor's property, the house is actually only seventeen feet tall, because this house is downhill. The neighbors at, at the Conservation hearing did comment, our original plan did not have any parking proposed, because Mr. Clements has always just parked in the circle at the end of the road. Neighbors didn't like that, said there was sometimes a problem with cars parking there. So as a result of one of the Conservation hearings, you have two parking spaces proposed in the front yard of the house to alleviate that concern of the neighbors. So we're improving the traffic flow and the traffic handling. I can say that the site is adequate for this size house, because this house has been here for more than fifty years, and it's, it's adequate, suitable for this use, a house being in a residential neighborhood. There'll be no impact and no increase in traffic flow. There's a two-bedroom house, it remained a two-bedroom house. But again, you know, we're proposing two parking spaces, so actually we'll be improving the traffic flow in the, in the, in this area. Visual character, this is a small house. It's actually smaller than the two abutting houses across the road, a couple of the small houses similar to this. So it will not negatively impact the visual character of the neighborhood. The septic system, as I, as I said, has been approved by the Board of Health, and we expect approval by Conservation Commission. I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
No questions. No questions.
No, no questions.
Improvement to the area.
That's a tough site to do this.
Yeah. So basically, you're elevating the septic, and that's to get the clearance to groundwater, and that necessitates the rest to be elevated.
It all came together to give them, you know, proper headroom down below. I mean, it's, it's, if you look at the floor plan, some of that is just storage, the utility hookups, things like that. It's not a bedroom, but it makes for a little bit more area in a small house.
Right. Okay. And I don't think anyone wants to comment in the public? See one person back there. Has the board heard enough? We could close.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay. And Paul, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Let's have a motion with respect to approval of the project.
I will move to approve, Application seventy-eight seventeen.
I'll second.
Okay. It's Kim and TJ. Any discussion? Findings?
So, twelve percent lot coverage remaining, twelve percent lot coverage. I think all of the setbacks were remaining, right? The twenty-two point seven. It is a tight lot, but I think it's increasing the utilization of the lot for the property owners. The proposed...
Improving the method of where sewage disposal is.
Yes, yeah. Oh, the parking will be on-site now. Proposed two parking spaces on the property. Two bedrooms, remaining two bedrooms. Any others? We have all the other 240-216, that type of stuff, right?
Testimony that, well, we got that the traffic's improving.
Mm-hmm.
They're not parking on. It's a smaller dwelling than the abutting lots. So it's really a, an improvement with...
Minimal.
Minimal.
Change to the...
Yeah. Actually, no change, except for the height.
So, any conditions as per plan?
Per plans?
Okay.
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. Our plans show the driveway as well.
I guess we are adopting the Conservation, Conservation did rule on this, no?
No, they haven't made a decision yet.
They haven't made a decision, just a finding that it is in Conservation, and the hearing was closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. This passes unanimously, I believe. And that wraps it up for the public hearing for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do minutes?
There are minutes for October...
Yes. If anybody was able to review that.
People had a chance to look at them?
Yep. Yep.
Mister, I wasn't here.
Right.
Motion to approve. Okay.
Accept. I'm not sure if it will be approved, but accept it.
Motion to accept from Jerry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
And aye?
I'll just say that I haven't looked at that.
So two abstentions.
Yeah, because it looks like Robert...
Paul wasn't here.
Robert was not.
No, he definitely wasn't.
Okay.
Is it just the ones, right?
Yes.
Administrative review of board on thirty Mount, Mount Martin Street?
Right, you had condition that's an administrative review on this property. It was the Smiths', and it was the Gil Martins' property, and it was used as a plumbing office and...
This is one of them, quite.
Found some things. I talked with Mr. Smith, because this administrative approval is overdue, but he hasn't actually totally moved in. Ashley was kind enough to go out to the site, because I didn't have time, and took pictures. There is basically no activity. He did get some windows replaced. He did give testimony, or testimony, he didn't give testimony. He told me that he is not yet in there, that he's building up to it, but, so I suggest to the board that you put it on hold for the administrative review for another six months, please.
Okay, so you'd like a motion to continue the review period for administrative approval for six more months?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Someone want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. And anyone want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, so Ed and TJ, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Probably nothing new on review or procedural rules or policies.
Hello.
Correspondents or board updates?
TJ, excuse me, not TJ, Ed and Bob Dugan went to the joint meeting last Saturday.
You guys want to give us a two-second report on that?
Two-second is that they went.
Yeah, it's basically on form planning was the biggest section that they did, and they talked about the section of Davis Straits that they want to focus on for further development, focusing on multi-family use.
We're going to have more apartments in this town.
More than we can use.
Not the way it's going.
What type of development was that called? Formed?
Form-based planning, so it's more in almost the architectural look of the building from the exterior versus what the actual function is interior.
That's interesting, because the internal use has...
Form followed function.
Yeah, has some impact on what it looks like on the outside.
So how are they proposing to achieve that?
They're in discussion phase.
Yeah, it's all discussion. They didn't say, they said what they liked, but there was no...
Nothing positive came out of it.
So, early, early discussions.
Yeah, early discussions.
All right, well, thank you for that, and apologies, at least from me, for not being there. I'm sorry. All right, and any future agenda items?
I just really want the board to keep an eye on the scheduled hearings. We are getting so many applications, as you can see, and that we queried you on November 30th. That is a 40B, and we did have to put another application on that, but we believe it's an easy application, and I will schedule that before the 40B, and we do have another 40B coming, I was told, next week. So, you know, they don't have to give us a waiver of the 30 days. I'm hoping that they do. If not, I will put that as well on November 30th.
Okay.
Because it is, you, you agreed to start that hearing at 5:30.
We did.
And remember, November 16th is 5:30.
I don't recall that.
Will you send a notice out?
You want me to send you your email?
Yeah.
I think you're not here on, or you, November 16th is, you weren't here for this Rod and Gun Club, were you?
No.
No. I did tell, I did tell Mr. Foreman that he does not have to appear on November 16th.
Well, thank you.
As long as we have a quorum, because you do have one other hearing.
Okay, so that would mean, TJ?
I'll be there.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a note of that.
I thought you did when I told you.
I know. Okay, with that, I think we're ready to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay, adjourn.